Hi there, everyone online. We're gonna get started here in just a minute. We're working through a technical difficulty.
Hi. I'll call them. We need to order. I'm Matt Rose, Vice Chair. Laura Kinzeth, our Chair, is not in attendance tonight, but she is remote online. I'll be, I'll be operating the meeting in person here. So, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission of Manitou Springs. It's Wednesday, October 1st. The purpose of the Historic Preservation Commission is to protect and enhance districts of historic significance, and instill and foster civic pride in the legacy and achievements of the past, and to improve the economic vitality of the historic areas of the community through encouraging compatible rehabilitation of historic structures. The Historic Preservation Commission is responsible for reviewing plans for building in the historic district of architectural appropriateness, and to ensure proposals meet the city's design guidelines, which are based on the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. The order of proceedings for tonight's public hearing items is as follows. First, to inquire, I'll inquire whether any commissioners have had ex parte communications relating to any agenda item, and if so, to recuse themselves. Second, open a public hearing and ask staff to present the case. Then we'll hear staff's presentation. I'll ask whether any commissioners would like to ask questions of staff. Next, I will ask the applicant to step forward to make further presentation. The applicant may make statements of clarification they feel are necessary to present their case. I will ask whether any commissioners would like to ask questions of the applicant. Next, I will declare the hearing open and ask if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on the case. The applicant will have the opportunity to rebuttal, and then I will close the hearing. Commissioners will then deliberate the case. I will then close the public hearing, and then the commissioners will vote on a motion to approve, deny, or impose conditions or recommendations. For any decision, I don't know that the appeal process is as follows. Written notice of appeal must be filed with the City Clerk's Office within 10 calendar days of the decision. Such appeals shall be heard by the City Council. Please refer to staff for further information. Next, I'll take role for the evening. Let's ask the commissioners to introduce themselves as we go, starting with Laura Kinzeth, our Chair. You're muted, Laura.
Yes, good evening. I'm Laura Kinzeth, Chair.
Joy? You're muted, Joy. Matthew Murphy, Commissioner. Matt Rose, Vice Chair.
Ann Nichols, Commissioner.
Erin Handlin, Commissioner.
Okay. Next, is there any notice of council action? I jumped ahead, sorry. That's why you're not ready.
No, I'm not ready. Can we, can we wait until the end of the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at the agenda here. Okay, we need to approve minutes from our last meeting. Any commissioners have comments on that?
They looked fine to me. I would move approval.
I'll second that. We have a second. Shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Did you have your hand up, Joy? We can't hear you, Joy. I think you're muted still.
For the record, Commissioner Porter did have her hand raised as aye, so yeah, we can, we can move forward.
Thanks. Didn't know the hand signals. Okay, so minutes have been approved. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing done. Move on.
And let's make sure that we see if there's any public comment on non-agenda items, if we did miss that.
No, that's, I've got that next.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Public comment, is there any public comment on non-agenda items?
I don't see any online.
Okay. So then, is there any unfinished business?
No, that would be noted on the agenda.
Got it. So then we move on to new business. And we would start with MCAC 2512, 606 Manitou Avenue. Exterior alterations, city hall office and kitchen windows. Are there any commissioners that have had ex parte communications regarding this case?
No.
None? So I'd like to open the public hearing and ask staff to present their case.
For the record, Zachary Davison, Planner. MCAC 2512 or 606 Manitou Avenue, exterior alterations, namely the windows for the kitchen windows and the office windows. This is a continuation of MCAC 2509, which we did last month with memorial windows being approved. So we are returning now with some updates. Here is overview, the building we're in right now. The request, very similar, three windows on the east facade, those would be the three in the kitchen, one window on the northeast facade, and kitchen storage, it's kind of like an angled corner there, and five windows on the north facade, one in the records closet, and four of those occupy two offices. Additionally, approval to conduct any necessary repairs discovered after window removal, and any necessary repairs resulting from installation, as well as any necessary repairs before final window installation. If approved, the kitchen needs to relocate a light switch and an outlet conduit that run in between windows, and then touch up any interior portions that interior cosmetic issues resulting from installation. We also have an option, restoration rehabilitation. I'm not going to discuss that. It would be the applicants, they will come forward and have something more. The proposed windows will be similar to the ones for Memorial Hall with the exception of the added three by three buttons on each side. The color that they're proposing is tan, but they've also, they also have other colors that could be considered here, either for the exterior or the interior. I also wanted to, and this is really not showing up very well here. Let me see if I can zoom in. Bear with me one moment. It's not showing up very well, but I'll go ahead and read it. This is an excerpt for window replacement, and this particular portion is from the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which it speaks mainly on secondary elevations. This wouldn't apply for those windows in the kitchen, which are primary elevations, but it would apply to at least the windows in the offices and the storage room, where it states that replacement windows on secondary elevations that have limited visibility must match the historic windows in size, configuration, and general characteristics, though finer details may not need to be duplicated and substitute materials may be considered. And I think this is important to note since the applicants are seeking a replacement of wood window without a vinyl. And so they, they are matching size and configuration and the general characteristics, and with that change allowed through Secretary Interior Standards. The site plan, very similar to the last one with the removal of those in Memorial Hall. And the pictures, these are the same pictures that we went over last month. And should the Historic Preservation Commission find it appropriate to grant the material change of apparent certificate certification, staff recommends the following conditions, that the total number of windows to be replaced may be reduced. Any, any reduction in scope shall not authorize window replacements beyond those approved in this application, and such reductions shall not require a new or amended MCAC. I've added this portion since it's been noted that the kitchen windows may be kind of off the table due to budgetary constraints while they are seeking approval. The application may change after the fact, but it'll never increase, only decrease in the total number of windows being replaced. And so the motion language is as follows, approve the MCAC at 606 Manitou Avenue. Approve MCAC at 606 Manitou Ave- Avenue with conditions as follows. Deny MCAC at 606 Avenue or postpone the MCAC at 606 Avenue until November 5th, 2025 for further consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Nichols?
Yeah, and this, Zach may have said, my hearing's not great, that this was more for the applicant than you, but I still have a question about the restoration option, and to what extent that's been fleshed out.
At the present moment, I have very, very little knowledge on that.
Okay.
And so this is going to be, and I apologize, it's just something that's going to have to be offered by the applicant themselves, yes.
Okay. So I'll wait for that.
Commissioners, anyone else?
What's wrong with the current windows?
Currently, the city has gone through inefficiency. Some, like in Fred, maybe you can speak more on this. I'm not sure a lot of the, kind of the background of this program.
Yeah, for the, for the record, Fred Rollenhagen, Planning Director, I, no, I don't know the specifics of the program that's happening, except that it's, there are energy efficiency upgrades that are, that are occurring, and it's in a, it's in a in a package. And what I would defer to the representatives who are representing the city to explain what's, what's happening, but part of the energy efficiency upgrades is to replace all of the windows along the back for something, for windows to be more energy efficient. This also includes eight, replacing the HVAC system in here. That's also part of this package. But I will, I'll defer to the representatives when they, when it's time for them to speak.
And then where were the windows that were already approved for replacement?
It would be the 10 windows behind us here in Memorial Hall, and there's also one in the storage closet as well. That's out of our view.
All those there?
Yep.
And Commissioner Kinzeth, you had a or Chair Kinzeth, you had a question?
Yes, I did. Just to clarify, for this part of the project, it's the 10 windows facing north, and those would be replaced with windows that would look like the old windows with no grids, but the three kitchen windows are included in this, and do I understand correctly that you're using a grid for those windows to imitate the divided lights? Because I just, I thought we decided that those grids would not be appropriate.
I don't know if it was discussed as not appropriate. I know, I know that the grids were discussed and were one of the concerns since the windows here in Memorial Hall were being replaced with kind of like a like-for-like style. And that just didn't match what was in the offices in the kitchen themselves, and and one of the main reasons, I think, at least the point of conversation was the lack of those grids. But yes, so to answer your first question as well, the three windows in the kitchen, and one window, which is the kitchen storage, and then five windows on that are two or four that are in two separate offices, and one is in the records closet. As for those that are located on a primary side, that would be the three windows on the east facade in the kitchen, and also the one window on the northeast facade, which is the kitchen storage. They are higher, have a higher visibility than those in, in the rear.
Oh, okay, so those windows are going to be assessed, correct?
Everything that's being presented, I believe, is, that is the plan, yes. But this is going to be, once again, going to have to be deferred to the applicant since they have a lot more information regarding that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions? Laura, take your hand off. You have your hand up still. There you go. Thank you. I'd like to ask the applicant to step up and make, make their I'd like to ask the applicant to step up and make, make their presentation. Please introduce yourselves for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kate Siplo with Schneider Electric.
Rob Livingston, Schneider Electric.
We appreciate your consideration this evening and we're happy to ask any questions and I do have a short kind of summary, if that would be helpful, that I can start with, if that's okay. So we assessed the condition of all of the windows in Memorial Hall that were existing and not recently updated or, or changed out. For example, the police department recently had their windows redone. So this is, you know, in the, again, the energy efficiency project package. So after assessing everything, we found that the windows that have the wooden frames, so that would be the two offices, the records room, and then the few in the kitchen, those have deteriorated pretty substantially to the point where there are structural issues. We're not even sure if restoration is a possibility. It looks more like a complete rebuild at this point. So essentially rebuilding the window from scratch with wood and glass panes. And unfortunately, the cost of that was about double what the vinyl option was. And unfortunately, that doesn't not, that does not fit into the existing project budget. But we do feel that the vinyl option, it will still maintain the historic look of the grid pattern in those areas, but provide the longevity as well as reduced maintenance and also provide the energy efficiency, you know, we, we have to ensure that all of the updates that we're doing are paying for themselves over a certain amount of time with the utility cost that will be reduced. So the current situation with these, these older wooden windows and the, the pretty large gaps that exist, they're not weatherproofed and it also provide, presents some comfort issues for the folks that work in those offices. So we do feel the vinyl option is adequate. It'll maintain the look of the building. It'll be consistent both on the east side as well. It's that whole back north side facade. So it'll maintain uniformity with the look and will ensure it's a color that is also aesthetically pleasing and in line with colors that have existed on the building in the past. So anything you want to add to that, Rob?
Yeah, Ms. Nichols, just to kind of answer the question you had, I, I did reach out to a, a restoration company that does specialize in historic buildings and windows specifically and did talk through the scope. We, we looked at all the photos that you guys have here as well and kind of talked through what it would look like. And that's where we ended up with the number, you know, the cost that would, that we'd mentioned here about it just being too far out of, out of budget to really address that way. And given they're north facing, they don't get a lot of sunshine. There could be moisture. You, you just never know. Once you start getting into it, it might start crumbling and there might not be anything there to restore anyway.
So we're happy to take questions if you have any.
I have one. Will the, is the insert popped in from the inside? Is it between the panes of glass? How, and is it plastic? What, what is it?
Yeah, to be between the panes of glass.
Oh, between the panes of glass. So it's not removable?
No.
Commissioner Kinzeth, or Chair Kinzeth, you have a question?
Yes, I do. About the grids. So is there any reason why we can't use exterior grids?
That may not be an option. I don't, I don't know that it would be the best option to have the exterior because they would get dirty, I guess. But when they're inside between, when they're inside the window between the panes of glass, they don't, they don't see weather, they don't deteriorate though. They're perfect, they're perfectly fine sealed inside, but I could look into the exterior option. I don't know if that is an option or not.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, because that would be more historically correct. I mean, the interior grids sometimes aren't even noticeable. So I think that would be worth assessing, maybe if that's possible.
Can we go back to the photos of the proposed vinyl option so we can take a look at what the grids look like? So this would be the look and then it's currently shown in white and we have proposed a tan color and that tan color would be on the grid as well as the outside portion of the window.
Do the current windows open and close?
They, they do. They can often get stuck depending on the temperature swings that exist here or humidity levels. So the, the new vinyl windows will be able to be opened as well, both for comfort and for safety purposes.
We typically aren't commenting on color. Is that something that we're to review tonight?
I don't believe so. But we'll, we'll be working diligently with city staff to ensure the color is something that feels historically accurate and also matches other parts of the building.
That's great. Another question?
So I do have a question, I guess. I understand what you said about the, the cost to refurbish them doesn't fit within the model you all are using to, for the energy savings to reimburse the cost. Is there an option to just not deal with those nine windows? Does that still screw up or hamper your, your recovery of energy efficiency to pay for the cost of the other improvements?
It would definitely have a negative effect. We were counting on the weather tightness of the building in terms of the energy efficiency of the new HVAC unit that's being put in. It wouldn't be a total deal breaker financially, but it would definitely detract from the overall goal of the project that City Council approved in May, which was to have more sustainable and energy efficient municipal facilities.
Right. But it might, might not crater your model because you reduce your costs and you reduce your efficiency. It may still pay back. I don't know if you've looked at that, but I think that's something you could look at.
We have.
Decide that this is not something we can approve.
Understood. Yes, this is a very high priority for city staff. So this is why we've spent a lot of time considering it and also getting feedback from this commission. So we definitely want to try to find something that works for everyone, especially the folks that work in those couple of offices. It's extremely uncomfortable when it's above 75 degrees outside or below about 50 degrees outside. So they have a pretty tight window of outdoor weather to be comfortable in their workspace. So and also just the, the weather tightness and maintainability of this building, making sure that there aren't those gaps for water intrusion and other, other complications that could arise from not being weather tight.
Have you looked into having storm windows built instead in order to keep the historic look?
We have not looked at storm windows and I think to this day I still don't understand what storm windows are here in the mountains. I come from Florida. So storm windows to me are something totally different. We have not looked at storm windows here. I, and honestly, I think that might take away from the, the current look anyway. But we have not looked at that.
I think I would advocate towards adding storm windows. There's a company in Denver called Compass Glass and they personally built my house and the storm windows on my house that are historically accurate with like the hooks at the top and then they have interchangeable screens and glass.
Any other questions or comments? Chair Kinzeth?
Yes, I am just echoing what Aaron, Aaron just said. I think definitely, we did discuss storm windows, I believe, at the last minute and I think we should still consider that as an option in order to save the existing windows.
We did talk about that at the last meeting.
I think another thing to note is the renovation that was recently done on the police department side of the building and it seems that there were not issues with getting those windows upgraded to vinyl. So I think maybe looking into the process that was or the methodology that was taken under consideration for the police station windows that would help with the uniformity of the look in the building, making sure it's consistent on all sides. And also making sure it's cost effective and obviously if it was approved in the police department, maybe we could use the same methodology for the rest of these windows, if that's something that we could approach as well.
I would just like to make a quick statement. Chelsea Royston, for the record, the police station did come forward to this board as an M C A C. Those windows that were replaced were either replaced for safety concerns or were not on primary facades. That was discussed as part of that M C A C.
Question to Chelsea. Were those wood divided light windows? I'm trying to recall, the old ones?
I think one of them was. I know at least one of them was salvaged. I don't know what became of it after that point. But I, I do just, I, I think it's important to kind of get back to the idea that we, there is a proposal on the table and that is what is being evaluated. And so I think the motion needs to be made either on the basis of this application with or without conditions, approval or denial and, you know, maybe not so much on the designing of the dais, as we call it.
Yep.
Designing of the what?
From the dais, from.
Oh, us deciding?
Designing, designing.
Got it. Is, is asking about storm windows designing from up here?
The current application does not include storm windows as part of the proposal.
Yes.
Yeah. I would just comment that the motion that we made last month was to investigate other approaches to achieve the same amount of energy efficiency without removing the historic wood divided light windows. So I don't think that's out of line, frankly. I think we asked them to look at all options that could achieve that. So I would disagree that that's not out.
Any further questions? The applicant? Don't see any. So then next to declare the hearing open, see if there's any members of the public who'd like to comment?
I'm not seeing any online.
Okay. Then I would like to close that part of the hearing and ask the commissioners to deliberate.
I'd be happy to start. This is obviously a, a different situation that we're usually, than we usually deal with. The fact that you all have this contract with the city that has parameters about what you're going to do and how it's going to be paid for by the increasing efficiency and therefore the lower cost that the city's going to bear. And I understand the argument that rehabilitating the existing wood divided light windows would, in your view, be cost prohibitive in that context with the, the contract you currently have. That's not how our ordinance or guidelines read. Our ordinance and guidelines dictate that if you're going to make an argument that, in effect, it's, you're in a condition of economic hardship, which would be the concept of cost prohibitive, I think. There's a very long list of things you have to provide for us to come to the conclusion that you can argue economic hardship and therefore not do what the commission would deem is the correct thing. And I think what we have, at least to this point, suggested is that ordinance and guidelines basically suggest that existing historic wood divided light windows should be either rehabilitated or retained in a, in a manner that leaves the appearance the same as currently. And I think in this, especially in this instance, and I do agree with the staff report argument about the appearance externally, but in a public building, we have control over internal changes, which we don't have for a private building. So in the case certainly of the kitchen, which is very, the windows in the kitchen are very evident from public spaces. I think the argument would be those should be retained unless you can demonstrate, demonstrate economic hardship, which you haven't even suggested you can. I think there's a, a little leeway with the windows in the offices, which wouldn't be public spaces and wouldn't ordinarily be viewed by the public. But I certainly think the probably four windows in the kitchen, you can't make an argument that we should accept that those shouldn't be rehabilitated and retained in their historic appearance or replaced in the same appearance with like construction and materials. So in my view, I think the furthest we could go would be to, to argue that the windows in the offices are not generally visible to the public and that we might be comfortable approving those being replaced. I don't think we could ever get comfortable replacing the kitchen windows.
Yeah, I, I think most of these windows are visible from the park that we back up to. What's the name of that? Mansions Park. And you said that all the windows are functioning, opening and closing. Of course, when we have large amounts of rain, they do swell, just like any wood, but they, they do come back to functioning when things dry up. And I think little by little, you take away the charm of a small town like this when you start replacing things with vinyl. And I'd be careful with the word upgrade because I don't see vinyl windows as an upgrade because these windows have lasted probably over a hundred years and the vinyl windows will end up in the landfill probably in 30 years, depending on what brand you're getting. And I think they're worth rehabilitating. And if you want energy efficiency, I would look into the wood storm windows.
I also like to comment. I think part of the, the thing that I'm aware of, I think other people appear on, on the commission are aware of it. This is potentially precedent setting across, across the community because we hold the community to really high standards and all the things that we're talking about here. It's no different than, than what we're responding to from this proposal. So I think we all have to be very cognizant of that.
Chair Kinzeth, you have a comment?
Yes, I completely agree with what you and Aaron and Anne have said and I think we should definitely go back to our original plan of evaluating those windows that are, the remaining historic windows by a historic windows specialist and replace the 10 windows as we decided, as, as they are. But in any case, I don't think using the vinyl windows with the grids in any way replicates the historic windows. the historic windows. So yes, let's stick with our original plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So then I would close the public hearing. And we would need to vote.
Yeah, and before the commission makes a motion, I would just, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, if there's a different consideration that's being applied to the windows that are not in the kitchen versus the windows that are in the kitchen. I would just ask that that be articulated in the motion so we can create a good record. And I'm just looking at the code criteria. If the commission is going to disapprove of the replacement of the kitchen windows, the code does ask that the commission recommend revisions of the applicant's plans if it disapproves of those. So if there are any recommended revisions, I would ask that the commission make some of those.
Thank you. If I'm not mistaken, we have made recommendation to look into storm windows. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to move on this?
I motion to deny this. Sorry, this is my first time.
There's some language in there.
Okay, you do it.
And I'm sorry, I'm very, very sorry to interrupt. I was out of the office, but I did not realize that you had opened up the public hearing, opened up public comment. I was talking with somebody who was interested in making public comment and they're on their way down.
Oh.
Is that possible to reopen, to hold off? Or...
Well, I don't see why not. Is that okay? We have a question or a comment from the audience?
I'm sorry, could, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think if we're going to open public comment up again, that would be most welcome. Thank you. Thank you for presenting.
Sir, did you have a public comment?
Okay, so I'll be reopening the public hearing. Please tell us, you can turn on the microphone. Push the middle button. There you go.
Hi, my name's Don Godey, co-owner of Sunwater Spa. We have an over 100-year-old building at the next door to Sunwater. And then, of course, I live at 103 Cliff Road, which is also over 100-year-old building. And I've also helped my business partner, Kat Tutter, with her historic buildings. And I just have a couple of quick little notes. So I've been studying wood, aluminum and fiberglass pretty intensely because I'm going to have to replace all the windows in my house at some point. And I just want to make a quick note that wood windows generally can be 15 to 30 years, depending on how well you take care of them, depending on the deferred maintenance and various other variables. Aluminum windows, 20 to 30 years, a lot more durable. They can be very expensive and also fiberglass. So when people bring up vinyl and people saying that vinyl isn't as sustainable, it's actually not true. It just depends on what level of vinyl that you buy, because there are cheaper models. But vinyl is actually a very good option in high deserts if you're willing to spend a little bit more money on it. So I'm just going to throw that out there because people like me are going to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on windows on our historic properties. And I do agree that whatever you decide today or moving forward is precedence. So I just wanted to just make that a matter of record, that there are a lot of different materials out there, depending on price. And you know, from what I have found with vinyl, I've had vinyl for over 15 years now in various applications. And it's worked for me. So is that okay?
That's great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else have public comment?
Hi, Denise Howland, I'm sorry, I'm not contagious. I have a double ear infection, so I, but I'm just protecting all of you too. So that's why I wasn't here earlier, sorry about that. I'm not sure what the discussion has been, but I wanted to mention that the windows that over in the police station, were those historic and? The windows in the police station? I think those were historic and we removed all those and replaced them with the same type of windows that we're going to put here. And that happened, what, two years ago, where we got approval from HPC to do that. And it's all the sides on that side of the police station, because they were also all wood at the time. And we had to replace them because they were, they were no longer meeting the needs and allowing air to come in and out. And HPC allowed us to replace those with the same type of windows that we're doing with this one. Questions for me, and I'm sorry, I did not hear the whole conversation, so I'm not sure what else I can add. Anything from me?
I'm not sure. I mean, I wasn't on the commission two years ago. And what were, those windows on the east side of the building then, of the police station?
West side of the...
On the west side of the building.
Those were all wood. They had the panels just like this one.
And I can, from my memory, I guess, I can weigh in as to why we approve those. They're not highly visible unless you walk between the fire station and City Hall. And unlike at least the kitchen windows, they're not in a public space. You don't have public just wandering through the police station. So I think those are the two differences that I would bring to bear from my memory. And I honestly don't recall, I think they were old wood windows, whether they were divided lights, I don't recall.
We didn't identify if they were divided light. Erin actually just found the staff report from that case. And she, it was exactly what you're saying. They were old, but they were not identified as original to the building. And they were wood and they work in, as you say, sensitive, secure areas and not on a primary facade. So those are kind of those three reasons.
Commissioner Murphy, for the record, do we know if these kitchen windows are original to the building?
There's nothing that indicates they are or they are not. I will state that regardless of the originality of the window, they can become character-defining according to the Secretary of the Interior. So age is really irrelevant and their originality is irrelevant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter has her hand raised.
Commissioner Porter?
Yes, I seem to remember like Anne was talking about the view of the windows and being visible to the public, but also when we approved the windows for the police station, there was a security thing brought up for them because the implication was that you'll have prisoners trying to jump out of windows. I think it was humorous and we talked about it. And there was a necessity of the place inside the police station. I think that was one of the reasons. And I don't see the kitchen windows being, needing to be that secure. Thank you.
Please come up again.
One of the things I ask you to consider is if we don't approve the kitchen windows to at least approve the office windows. I can't have people working in there anymore in the winter. There are gaps like this, snow comes in. It really allows us not to have anybody work in those offices during the winter. And so if the kitchen, if you say we just can't approve it, we just won't replace them at this time, that's going to be our choices. Okay, we can't replace them. But those windows in the office back here, I really need those approved in order to have somebody work in the space. Otherwise, I'm having them work in a space that is not conducive during the winter, especially. We tried to tape them, we've tried to do lots of things, but it just isn't going to be sustainable. And I do not have the money to make them right at this point, if you make them wood. We've looked at that and I just financially cannot do that at this point.
Thank you.
If I could make a comment. So I guess to support that, the Secretary of Interior standards, at least as it pertains to visibility, it never mentions the lack of visibility. I think that's just an impossible, it's just an impossibility. And having a elevation being completely invisible. And so it uses the terms primary and secondary. And those are elevations that lie on a primary facade or primary right-of-way streets and things like that. And while the park is accessible, the visibility would still be considered limited from the primary or, to kind of deviate, I guess, from the word primary, from the right-of-way that is El Paso or Lover's Lane behind us. The visibility is limited in regards to that right-of-way and not so much the park. It's still limited in the park, but I just wanted to get that out there. And then to bring up, I guess, the slide again here, and I'm trying to really get it to show up clear, but it's just not. Where it just, it mentions replacement windows on secondary elevations that have limited visibility. And it speaks that it only must match the windows in size, configuration and general characteristics. And also mentions that finer details don't need to be duplicated or substituted, and substitute materials may be considered. Of course, this is completely up to the board. But the standards that we follow allow those changes and allow that flexibility.
And if I may as well, and Zach had prepared a slide also kind of outlining the differences between residential building codes and commercial building codes. And I understand that historic preservation, in theory, applies equally to all. However, when we look at things like places of employment, especially governmental places of employment that are subject to the Americans with Disabilities Act, OSHA, you know, we look at some of those standards and you know, how easily a window could be opened, not just can it be opened, but how easily it can be opened, what ventilation it provides, you know, things like that, I think, do come into play and they do differentiate a building like this from residential buildings in town. I will say all that kind of with the footnote that we do not have building code experts on our staff. That is something that the building department, the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department, provides for us. And so there are other legalities, I think, at play here. And I think that the separating the public space of the kitchen from the private, not private, but kind of business area of the building and those back offices, I think, is an appropriate approach. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Zach did a ton of research on it, but believe it or not, I was worried it would muddy the waters, so.
Okay, do we have any other comments from the public or anyone? Or from commissioners regarding that? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing again. And since we stepped back for that, is there any deliberation that we want to have amongst the commissioners?
Well, I'll go ahead and I think kind of say what I said before, is I think there's no good argument for replacing the historic wood divided light windows in the kitchen. I think they're highly visible from both outside and inside. And as a public building, interior changes are under our purview. So I cannot even contemplate us approving that. I do think that the fact that the other historic wood windows are in private offices is a significant fact. And that I could get comfortable with approving those five being replaced as proposed. And so I would actually, if we're through deliberating, I would make that motion.
Anyone else have comments before we move into that? Seeing none? Does anyone have a motion?
That would be my motion. That we approve, that we deny any change to the wood windows, the historic wood divided light windows in the kitchen. And we approve the request for replacement of the five windows in the private offices.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have unanimous passed it. Thank you, everyone. We can move on to the next order of business, new business for MCAC 2513, Hiawatha Gardens. Are there any commissioners that have had expiry communications about this case?
No.
Seeing none? Can staff please present the case?
Thank you. Again, Chelsea Royston, for the record, and presenting the Hiawatha Gardens, MCAC 2513 at 10 Old Man's Trail and 487 El Paso Boulevard. In, I believe, August of this year, the HPC was presented with preliminary conversation that outlined the scope of review for this project. So kind of building off of that case or that presentation and diving a little deeper into the proposed design of the Hiawatha Gardens rehabilitation, I will be referencing back to those items that were specifically identified during that case. So the city of Manatee Springs proposes significant alterations to the site to include interior and exterior alterations to the historic Hiawatha Gardens Pavilion, new construction of a separate structure for public restrooms and site improvements. The site is currently zoned commercial. City Council will hear the application and first reading of a proposed ordinance to rezone the property to public facilities next Tuesday, October 7. The site is in the commercial core historic sub-district. And again, just kind of high level, the, there are multiple application packages moving forward for this project, excuse me, for this project as a whole. So you're seeing kind of one part of it and one aspect of it. And so what you, what this commission will be reviewing has gone through administrative review and comment. You will make a recommendation to city council, count, no, excuse me, sorry. Yeah, sorry. My diagram here had me messed up. The Historic Preservation Commission does have purview over the items that are identified later on in this presentation. And then city council will be reviewing a recommendation from city planning commission regarding the rezoning, partial right-of-way vacation and a major development plan. Here is another look, and so this one does show and identify correctly that the Historic Preservation Commission does have purview over the material change of appearance certification. And so what we use to evaluate the the, the M C A C application is in chapter seventeen. We will also be referencing the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the treatment of historic buildings. And this application includes a letter of explanation, photographs of the existing property and the relationship to the surrounding areas, a site plan, proposed layout, elevation drawings and details. They did submit a checklist for applicability and materials palette. And when I say they, I am of course referring to Erin Ringsred, the project manager on the case, as well as our consultants. So we'll dive into the building regulations. The larger yellow part of the diagram, block in the diagram, is the historic Hiawatha Gardens Dance Hall. And that is subject to Secretary of the Interior Standards as it is a contributing structure within the historic district. The smaller building to the north is a proposed new restroom facility. And that is subject to chapter seven of the historic district design guidelines from the city of Manitou Springs as it is new construction in the historic district. Though it is a publicly owned structure. It's not yet deemed a historic resource or a resource in the historic district. And so to expedite approvals, we have determined that the interior finishes of the new restrooms are not subject to H P C approval. But the exterior of the building will be. And again, that was all discussed during the August sixth hearing, I believe it was. That is what I just mentioned. Again, this project is going towards the path of rehabilitation of the Hiawatha Gardens building, which is defined as the act or process of making possible a compatible use for a property through repair, alterations, additions or and additions, while preserving those portions or features which convey its historic, cultural or architectural values. This project has been through many iterations over the years. And most recently, it has been designed with the intent that the the temporary walls that had been put up in, I believe, after twenty sixteen. To kind of shore up the building, those will be removed and it will be an open-air pavilion with the historic queen rod trusses, which are a distinctive structural feature. That is the sort of the main structural feature that is intended to be repaired and preserved through this project. So it'll be mostly the roof structure and the exposed rafters. There are other improvements to the site such as gutters and downspouts. And then a more robust structural structural columns, which will help to reinforce the structure as well. There is also intended to be a steel frame tucked into the existing roof line, which will help again to reinforce the structure while remaining as with as limited visibility as possible. Part of the Secretary of the Interior Standards also speak to resilience for natural hazards. And part of the challenge of this building has been to preserve it while also taking care to address the fact that it is in the floodplain. And so being responsible stewards of public funds and acknowledging public safety risks that come with building in the floodplain. The proposal shows the removal and salvage of the wooden flooring from the Hiawatha Dance Hall and replacing it with concrete foundation and floor. This is mostly due to code requirements relating to the floodplain and structural requirements. The roof structure, again, and its sighting on the historic site will be preserved through that design. So here, these are difficult to see on a projector. But this is actually showing the elevations with a few photographs and then the materials palette. So this will actually show it a little bit better, but the asphalt shingles will remain as the roofing. And concrete colored in Manitou red will form the foot of the columns and part of the way up the column as well to create those vertical members that will secure the roof essentially. Moving on to the new construction of the proposed restrooms. And this is where we get into more familiar territory as we're dealing with the Manitou Springs Historic District Design Guidelines. So here we have all of the guidelines that apply to this building. And again, to the restroom building. And I have briefly addressed each of those. So there, the site was designed so that the new building matches the alignment of the historic building in, in how it relates to the street and, and to the other building. It is a little interesting because the the restroom facility is actually accessible from all four sides as it faces north El Paso Boulevard and then it has parking areas on the east and west and a pedestrian plaza to the south that connects it to the Hiawatha Dance Hall. And so when we talk about how that building is oriented, it really is, as you can see in that diagram on the lower right-hand side. Kind of extrapolated up so that it creates a very nice geometry on the site. We also look at pedestrian-friendly environment, as I just mentioned, for infill and architectural details that establish a distinct character. We do have what appears to be rafter tails on Hiawatha Gardens, however, after further investigation, really, it, those are faux rafter tails. Yes, that was our reaction to Commissioner Nichols. So the design is really going to reflect what the original features are as it relates to the rafter structure and and so the that I think was a more recent identification and so the, the restroom facility will be designed to integrate with the historic portion of the building, of the site. So that may be a question and I apologize for bringing that up, but of how that really will play out on the bathroom facility. The materials on that building will reflect other buildings throughout the, the district. And I will get to those materials as well. The primary facade materials are stucco and stone with asphalt shingle roofing. And the exterior doors on the restroom building will be painted metal security doors, which is consistent with the other similar structures throughout town. So here you can see the elevations of that proposed building with our materials palette. And then we'll move into the site improvements, which is under the purview of chapter ten of the Manitou Springs Historic District Design Guidelines. This diagram shows the various walls that are proposed to be built on the site. I say that though many of them are called seating walls. So they are lower and to be used as, you know, seating on the site. So many of the walls in this, all of the orange colored walls on the diagram are to be concrete in Manitou red. There will also be stone veneer seat walls. And then and the existing retaining wall along Fountain Creek will remain. Again, here are the guidelines that will apply as discussed in August. We go through each of these, the existing stone walls, bridges and stairs are this stone retaining wall along Fountain Creek will remain. However, the stairs on the north of the site are not original and they are proposed to be removed to facilitate increased ADA accessibility. Much of the site is relatively flat. But the the retaining walls are proposed near the, the north side of the site adjacent to El Paso Boulevard. And then as it gets closer to the south of the site towards Fountain Creek, that's where we see the majority of the grade changes. And yes, I've already been over the materiality of the walls. Much of the site to the east of the Hiawatha Gardens Historic Building is, will host a redesigned parking lot, which is designed to take advantage of existing, of the existing earthen berm and site to the north of the site, which will shield the parking lot from view. Site landscaping will also be installed in accordance with the land use and development code. The mechanical equipment is, oh, excuse me, the service area for the trash enclosure is located in the southeast corner of the parking lot and will be screened again in accordance with the land use and development code. And yes, the the landscape buffer along the edge of the site is intended to integrate with the pedestrian character of, of the site. Exterior lighting is one item that is typically reviewed by Historic Preservation Commission. The site for the historic dance hall is proposed to be located on top of the historic trusses with uplighting so that the trusses are actually more visible. And the light will then be diffused off of the interior of the ceiling and create more of a softer ambiance. There will also be pedestrian bollards out in the pedestrian plaza that are all full cutoff and compliant with dark skies. There are no exterior lighting that is proposed for the structures. And that's typically within the purview of H P C. But these lights are, I believe, the same lights that were designed or that were selected for the library site. And they're very minimal and designed to not draw attention. And they do not imitate faux historic aesthetics. And then for security features. It, I believe, will be very similar to what we see on our other open-air pavilions. There may be metal grates, oh, excuse me, metal grates are not being proposed as we see on Soda Springs. So it will look more like the Mansions Park Pavilion. Should the Historic Preservation Commission find it appropriate to grant the M C A C? Staff does not recommend any conditions. And I do have some motion language prepared for you and I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners have questions for staff?
So I've got a couple. My main question is about the concrete columns. And it was hard, it was actually almost impossible to tell from what we had online how far up the wood posts they go, but they, it looked like they go pretty far up the wood posts. And my question would be, given if that is true, I wonder if Manitou red is really the appropriate look for those columns. That would be my main question. And then I had one other question about, it talks about the proposed soffit detail. And I tried to look at that again online, but had trouble really figuring out what it was saying. So that would, those clarifications I would like, thank you, at some point.
Thank you, yes. I, I can feel our project manager getting ready to answer those questions as soon as she's called upon.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So you mentioned the rafter tails are faux, so they're just decorative, correct?
We're not totally sure. I would also direct that to the project team. I saw a picture today, actually, that indicated that they, they aren't, they aren't structural. So they don't connect to the actual rafters. But their purpose is, if they are decorative, they're very minimalist.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from commissioners. In that case, would the applicant please come forward?
Hi, Erin Ringsred, project manager for the city, for the record.
Hello, this is Byron Zick. I'm with Davis Partnership Architects for the record.
And I did, I apologize, this is a hundred percent on me. Chelsea has been very gracious in getting us here tonight because we have a very ambitious schedule. But we did make a correction that I brought in to the last minute. But we do have one light fixture that is proposed as attached to the structure. I'll share it on my screen here. Again, because they wouldn't be there historically, we haven't made it faux historic. We've included it so that we can get even light distribution through this space and meet our dark sky compliance and our foot candle requirement. So bear with me while I do my, my screen share. And it was, it was in the packet there. It's this fixture here in black and so it is intended to work with the bollards that bollard lights that are on site. So just very meant to not have a lot of ornamentation so that it disappears, right? That it's not contributing ornamentation to the site that's not historic. So we are showing that on the exterior columns of the building to provide a little bit of downlight and get that lighting evenly distributed distributed through that space. Any questions on that?
Yes. So is there will be uplighting and downlighting on the columns?
These are just downlit. Because uplighting is not really compliant with our dark sky compliance there.
That would be inside. Chelsea, you mentioned that.
That's a different fixture. So this is the fixture that's on the exterior of the columns and that is downlit. On the interior of the structure, we have this kind of linear light feature. So it is uplighting into the ceiling. These fixtures are fully under the roof structure and aren't contributing to uplighting on the outside.
Thanks.
So do the the external lighting fixtures, are they on the concrete column or on the wood column?
We are showing them on the wood columns. They would be up at that height. Yes, they'll be a little bit higher.
Are there going to be other options for the external light features or?
There are no other options being proposed at this time. These are a fixture that is just again minimalist, has a really good warranty. Fits in that space. So it's not draw attention to itself, but provide the safety lighting that we need.
Can we see those again? How high up are they?
The height will be somewhere between six and probably around seven feet above grade. And that's to the middle of the fixture.
On the wooden portion of the column or the the concrete?
Correct, on the wood portion of the column.
And if I may, since we're kind of talking about the columns, we can get into Commissioner Nichols' questions about the columns. So we did work extensively with our structural engineering team on the project to figure out what was the best way to stabilize this structure for use in the future. Right now, the structure does not meet our wind load requirements. It does not meet fire code loading. It does not meet the flooding. If this site were to flood, it doesn't have the right resistance in the right direction for that type of force. So we looked at several different options, trying to figure out the best way to stabilize the structure with the lightest hand possible. And so that is what we see here with the concrete column and I can, actually, would you mind pulling that one up? Thanks. With the concrete column option and that sort of recessed steel frame that you really wouldn't notice as a user of the space. Other options that were explored would have to kind of get us there. Part of why we preferred this option was it kept sort of that free flowing of space visually through those different windows of columns. Additionally, this also allowed those kickers to remain that are part of the original where they come up the column and you have the kicker. Other options that we looked at with like steel reinforcement of the columns would have either clouded or necessitated, sorry, necessitated the removal of those kickers. So we felt like those were really important in that space and we wanted to reduce the need for any other sort of vertical strategies within those columns as well because we also looked at if they did like had to do a crisscross between those columns that really would have just added more to the structure and we wanted to keep it as close to the original as possible while bringing it into code compliance. They were open to suggestions on the concrete column if there's another color that's preferred. But based on kind of design guidelines and it being concrete, we felt like red was the most appropriate thing to bring to you guys at this time because it will be surrounded by red concrete as well.
Do you have a visual representation of what that would look like? It just to me sounds like it would be odd.
Let me pull that up and I'll share my screen.
Because that would help, I think.
Yeah.
Let's see.
So I'm going to ask you to not look at every other finish in this picture because it's not representative of all the materials we're proposing here, but this does have showing kind of what that column looks like. Because that column is really becoming the foundation and Byron can speak a lot more technically to that to me, but that's extending into the ground, attaching to a footer down under there and giving us that load so that we're reinforcing as much below the surface as possible.
In the render, it looks like the concrete that it's under the pavilion is gray and the sidewalk looks like it's the Manitou red. Is that right?
Yeah, that's where I don't want you to look at the other finishes in this image because it's it's the finishes that we have proposed are proposed as shown in the application. So that's why we didn't put a rendering in the application.
So it would be Manitou red all under.
That's the intent, correct?
Okay, thank you.
And it's not just the paving that is Manitou red. I believe there are also a number of paths that are crusher finds. So it'll bring that natural element to it as well to help tie it into the site.
I see Cherokee has her hand up.
You have a question, Cherokee?
I was just wondering, so in this rendering that you have pulled up, the wood portion of the posts are shown in white, but are they actually natural wood?
So I am going to stop sharing the screen and we can kind of run through the materials if that would be helpful. And I think this is a good segue into the kind of the conversation about the sort of soffit and kind of that detail that Commissioner Nichols brought up earlier. So I'm going to let Byron here go through that. And I would it be helpful for me to share the details? Do you want to share it on your screen? Okay, awesome.
Yeah, just to speak a little bit to the edge detail around the perimeter of the Historic Pavilion. There are primarily three reasons we elected to not design it with the exposed rafter tails. The first is due to the the guess we have that the vast majority of those are not structural and integral to the structure. We are working with our general contractor to to have increased access to some of the to some of the areas without a lot of visibility. I'm sorry, Erin. Thanks. And from the best we understand, though, we do not believe those are structural. The second reason is they're quite deteriorated and a lot of those are are in danger of likely not surviving the construction process. The primary reason as the as the image that Erin was just showing, we we struggle to find a great image. However, we don't think that the rafters were ever exposed to begin with. And this is the best image that we have to to assert that. And so that's the way that we proceeded with the design of the edge of that pavilion. I guess I'll add one more. We are proposing a gutter around the perimeter for a number of reasons, which we think will we are trying to design the gutter in a way to reflect the condition that you see on the screen. Admittedly, it's hard for all of us to see, but but we think there's a bit of a flare up on the gutter, right? At an angle as opposed to it being square. So we're trying to design the gutter as such and the rafter tails, if we were to design it in that way, while possible, would not act as a successful enough, as if successful of a substrate as our current design. So hopefully that was some helpful insight. Sure. So we we are proposing to as well, I guess I'll start with the steel. The steel beam, which is necessary from a structural standpoint, as Erin alluded to earlier, there's no there's no either, well, there isn't a what's called a lateral resisting system. So there's no system in place currently that would adequately that is sufficient to resist either wind or seismic loads. So because of that, we need to add a ring of steel around the edge of the pavilion. And we're essentially just cladding that in board siding to to help to build out a profile similar to what you see on screen again to 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 help to replicate the historic condition as well as as well as to capture the entirety of the truss around the ring of the pavilion, if that makes sense. And as you can see on the left, you can see the profile of the gutter that we're proposing. I guess while this while this image is on the screen, I'll also note to echo what Erin had mentioned earlier. The historic kickers are to remain. And we we will need to add some trim around the posts where the cursor is to be able to conceal a little bit of additional steel that we need just to be able to make this whole thing work, stand up and survive for for another 100 years.
And I believe to Cherokee's questions about finish, currently the kicker and columns are painted. So we would be repainting those right now.
Yes, for the for the columns, yes, for the kickers, there's still there's still, you know, a dialogue of of whether those kickers want to be refinished to match the trusses. That's the current proposal. So the existing queen rod trusses, we are proposing to strip the existing finish and restain to expose the historic wood. And I think we still need to, we still need to study that a little bit more deeply and and also, quite frankly, we want to expose the finish on a portion of one to to see how the wood is going to take a stained finish. And so there's the there will likely be some some decision making whenever we begin the construction process.
And just to add, we did walk the property, walk the building with representatives from History Colorado to ask them kind of just the direction that we're going in, if they saw any issues. I know that had been a question just with regarding period of significance. And they were excited about the direction and felt like that was appropriate with how we're trying to reinforce it at this time. And kind of shared our, you know, our desire to make sure we're saving this building and allowing it to continue to exist safely within the space that it currently is, which is in the floodplain. So and yeah, they I think with the finishes inside, they were open to kind of either direction with that.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from commissioners? I guess not. Okay, I guess applicant can take your seats. So now I'd like to close the public hearing and or close the hearing and have the commissioners deliberate, commissioners? Anybody have comments to discuss? Oh. Missed that one, sorry. Is there any public comment tonight?
I don't see any online.
Thank you. Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. And deliberate with commissioners. Any comments from commissioners?
Well, I'll just comment, I've been involved with this for many years now, it seems like. And I think they've arrived at a very acceptable place where we still keep the historic structure. The picture I think demonstrates that it's going to look much like it did in the early 1900s. And I think the proposals in here, including the new restroom structure are all consistent with our code and guidelines. So I think it's a good approach.
I agree. Okay. Then would anyone like to present a motion to move forward?
So I'll go ahead and move that we approve whatever this is, MCAC 2513 as proposed.
Do we have a second? We have a second. Great. Then all in favor of approving this case?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimously approving this case. And we close the public hearing. So next up, that is all of our new business. Is there any other business? Looks like we may have the social media posts to discuss.
Yes, and I did receive two additional topics to what were in the what were in the packet and let me find the right screen. So just to add a post, I'm just going to read this into the record. A post that includes information on winter maintenance and tips on older homes. And a post that highlights the Vicki Bunson Duquette grant and how to apply and qualify. So I think that's pretty consistent with the other topics. So and you'll have to forgive me, I actually believe I kind of entered that conversation late. So the intent was to provide these on social media. Many of you may be aware that the city of Manitou Springs has moved towards a newsletter format for the weekly report. It'll actually now be the biweekly newsletter. I would ask that any posts maybe perhaps have a an accompanying kind of a partner article in the in the newsletter. Fred, I don't know if you have any anything to add.
Yes, something very quickly. Yes, with this newsletter, I think actually, this is one of the reasons why the city is putting together and distributing this newsletter. It's going to be kind of in a newspaper form is to provide the information that provide information that HPC is wanting to convey to the public. And so I think this is probably a better venue than than just doing it on something like social media. I talked with our Public Information Officer a little bit about this and she thought that this is actually the preferable way to do it rather than going through social media. That we have, this is a, this is a an ideal platform for information that HPC wants to convey to the public.
Will this be? How does this get out to the public, the newsletter?
Sorry about that. Let me, let me clarify. So it's if anybody receives or has received the city's weekly report, it's similar to that, but people have to sign up for basically a subscription. There's no cost to it. But they'll have to sign up so they can receive this this newspaper or this newsletter when it get when it comes out every every other week. I think it's going to come out twice a month. So essentially that'll be every other week. It'll be a subscription. It'll be a subscription, you sign up for it and then, and then you'll be able to receive it that way. I don't know if there are other, other ways to do it. I have not heard that we're going to try to put something in print form and have it in the, you know, have it in the front hallway or anything like that. But I need to get some more information about whether it will be available on the website. And I can, I'll, I'll provide that information when I, when, when I have it.
And just to clarify, when you say you'll subscribe to it, it is free. And so it's, it's just a free email newsletter, similar to what the weekly report was, just different, different type of writing.
So it is an email, it's not like a physical piece of paper that's being delivered? Okay. Is there any reason to not do both? I mean, if we did a, a post on Instagram or wherever we are and then have something a little more detailed in the newsletter?
No, I think the short answer is I don't think there's a reason not to do both. But it might be the, the type of information that you want to get out. And, and this is where our PIO will really be able to help us and help you use the right interface. Social media is good for getting out, you know, tidbits of information or smaller bites of information. Whereas this newsletter style will be, will be night, will be available for, you know, larger articles or longer, longer, yeah, I guess longer articles that you, more in-depth information that you would want to get out to the public.
And I think too, in my opinion, social media is great for two-way communication. And the newsletter would be more providing information too, but providing less opportunity for feedback and engagement, which I think probably has more benefit in this instance if we're trying to send information to the public. It's, it's better to clarify that, that one-way communication.
The only problem that I see with the email is anyone that gets it has to subscribe to it. So worth it likely, they're very aware of everything that's on the city's website already. I, I didn't know that this existed.
It's brand new.
Okay, well, there we go. But like something like the, the grant, I think that would be a, a great opportunity to put on social media where a lot of people in the city aren't getting this newsletter or won't be getting this newsletter, but do have access to that. So it just reaches more, more eyes. That's my thoughts on it.
Great. Any other comments?
So, how are these articles being generated?
Last time we talked about it, Matt, Matt and I were going to sort of spearhead those together. Yeah, that was a month ago. But I, I, I'm still, I'm still willing to do that. I think we're going to need more than seven topics. But this is a great start, especially if we're going to, you know, I think maybe we would start with a once a month thing, but maybe, you know, even twice a month would be great, depending on what sort of messaging to get out. So we just need, we need some clarification on, you know, how early do you have to get the information in to get it posted and to get it in the newsletter? I mean, to me, there's a whole different audience that's looking at things on, on their phones as opposed to getting things in email. There's a different subscription process and all that. So doing both, I think would be great. I think we'd, we'd cover a lot more people in town.
So I would recommend maybe we could set up a meeting with perhaps you or me, Fred or, Fred or I and our public information officer and then the two Mads. And, yeah, that, that should be fine to kind of work out that framework and get some information from Cassandra.
I, I have a question. So you mentioned that most of the submissions kind of followed the same, same vein. My computer died, so I can't see them. What are they? Do we have like six, seven different topics right now or do we only have like two topics?
Let me read those.
I think they have six right now because you brought two extras, but one was, one was duplicate. Okay.
Right, so there's one which says, "A brief statement that restoring rather than replacing historic old growth wood windows is beneficial and include the National Park Service Preservation Brief." And it links to that brief. Number two, again, the, the mini grants. And then perhaps highlighting projects that have been completed with that grant funding. Third, during National Preservation Month, which is May, promote preservation-related activities. Number four, the need for permits and approvals for all window replacements in the historic district. And number five, availability of state and federal tax credits for appropriate renovations of historic structures in the historic district.
Thank you.
I think those are all great topics.
All right, so we need to follow up with you about when to have a meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'll, I'll reach out on email.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great. I think that concludes our other business unless there's any other comments. All right, then. Oh, notes of council action updates.
I, I was going through my notes and no, there, there's no council action related to
Wait till the end.
Historic preservation. But for what it's worth, you, you, let's see. I, I think I provided a few updates on an ordinance for, they would allow accessory dwelling units. That's been passed by the Planning Commission and that's going to go to city council for public hearings in October. And will probably be, be passed under the second reading, which is the third, the third Tuesday in October. How is that relevant to Historic Preservation Commission? Fortunately, the state legislate, I should say, state law requires communities like ours to allow for ADUs. However, it also allows us to, to apply our historic design ordinance to ADUs. So if somebody wants to build an ADU in the historic district, they, they will have to comply with our standards.
Great. Okay, thank you. And if there's no other issues to bring up, I don't think there are, then we can plan to adjourn. So we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.